All right, welcome to this, the school board meeting and we'll start with calling the meeting to order with Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the states of Texas. To the Republic of America, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I think-
Yeah, it's on to me, I have to-
Actually, do we have swearing in first?
Yes. Yep, first thing. So, welcome Donna.
Thank you. Thanks. We have Julie and Dan raise your right hand. There's actually two part oath here. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will be true and faithful to the State of Vermont and that you will not directly or indirectly do anything or act injurious to the Constitution or government thereof so help you God under pains of penalty or perjury.
I do.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm and faithfully execute the office of School Board Director for the State of Vermont, will there do equal right and justice to all persons for the best of your judgment and ability according to law so help you God under pains of penalty or perjury.
I do.
Okay. Congratulations.
Welcome back.
Congratulations. Here's just this whole thing I wrote.
Oh, cool.
David showing that you are.
Bye-bye.
You look like very intelligent.
Okay, both.
Oh, she does, yes, you said observer.
Oh, it's nice to meet your granddaughter.
Did you get to go to college yesterday and teaching early?
Excellent, good citizen.
Yes, so here's your appointment.
Thank you.
Would you like a copy of this oath when it's done?
Sure.
Do you offer this rule?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll scan and send it this month.
Perfect.
Hang on.
Thank you, Donna.
Thank you.
And again, thank you for your service and giving us the information-
Thank you, Donna.
-as you did last night.
No problem, and we can talk later about how we can transcribe.
Yep, perfect.
Thank you, Donna.
Thank you.
So, we're on to the next item. I'm gonna request a recommendation for the election of a chairperson. So, I'd like to nominate a specific candidate.
Second?
So, a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? I hear none. Congratulations, Elizabeth.
Thank you.
You're back on.
All right. Do we need to elect a clerk? Do I have a nomination for the position of clerk?
I nominate Martin Long.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Martin, congratulations.
Oh, thank you. Onward.
Obviously, we don't like change too much. All right, and our fourth agenda item is to designate a school board member to sign contracts on behalf of the board. Do I have a nomination? We have typically had our clerk do that in the past.
I nominate Martin to sign contracts on behalf of the district.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Martin is designated to sign contracts. All right. Any comments from the public regarding items that are not on the agenda? Yes?
I want to state my name and all that.
Yes, please.
Okay, I'm Tricia King. And my question was in regards to the website for the Tuttle school change, the fusion one. I submitted a few questions, but then I didn't get any response back that they were accepted or, and then I wondered, well, maybe didn't go, but I just wanted to see if that gets, if somebody responds back or at least says, hey, we got your email and we're looking at that. And then the other one is if we do ask a question, will it get posted on that or so everybody else can see that that question was asked? And then on to another one is the people that are serving on the different committees, I was wondering if and how many people, I know there's a lot of people from elementary schools that may be serving on the committees, but are there some that have existing children in Tuttle? So, they have sort of a background, you know, like, I think, just curious, you know, if there were some. And maybe you'll explain that more as the website transitions, you know?
No problem. Let me, let me thank you, Tricia, for asking the questions. First is, we do wanna have up-to-date responses. I will tell you, though, that during this past, you know, week and a little more, we've not been as diligent about that. We've been on, obviously, people have not been around, so our committees haven't been active. The intent, though, is that that website is maintained and we will work to respond to people who submit and we'll be able to then respond and push those up so you'll see them, but you'll get a response. And then the other part is around representation around the committees. I think, you know, again, we would've liked, I would've liked to have everybody who wanted to be on the committee there, but that did not happen. But we do have representation where parents do cross over from having children in one of the elementary schools as well as in the middle or in the middle only. So, again, I think we do have that representation.
No, I was just in transition for that question was, a lot of the parents that I think that have children in the elementary school don't know anything about Tuttle. And so, you know, it's like a foreign, you know, it's like an alien country, you know, it's like really foreign. And so, you know, getting a little bit more information and, you know, everybody's explained about the core curriculum and all that. But I think that having sort of, even walking through a day of what it's like may be helpful for a lot of people just understanding, you know, so.
That's great.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you very much, Tricia, and we'll make sure that, and again, happy to receive email from you, too, if you have other ideas. Again, that's part of the process that we're looking for.
Okay.
Thank you. All right. Seeing no other questions, I'll move on to any amendments to the agenda, David?
No.
All right. So, city-school collaboration.
So, because we've been on break, actually, Elizabeth and I have not had the chance to meet, again, our normal, regular session. I do think as we get down to item number 12, though, voting and budget results, I think we'll walk into perhaps some board discussion around next steps for us around city and school collaboration. And so, that is there. I will, I will tell you that, and I think this is an important conversation for us probably to have on a future agenda item, would be what I'm gonna call the, you know, the work ahead around master planning and visioning.
Mm-hmm.
As you know, we've been talking about this for a long time, but I think it's really important to have the conversation particularly because we're talking about first grade and a lot of questions are coming up with the bigger plan and where does that fit and how does it, how does it work for the board, so?
You mean fifth grade?
Uh, fifth grade. What did I say? First?
First grade.
First.
Fifth grade, fifth grade. So, anyway, I think that that would be an important component for us to talk more about on the city-school stuff.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Okay. All right, move on to the methadone clinic update.
So, as we reported last time, again, there's no new information to report on this. The Supreme Court will hear our case on March 17th from 10 o'clock to 12 o'clock at the Vermont Law School. And I know there's a couple of board members going, as will I, and basically, we will kind of await to see how that unfolds. So, again, I think that's important for folks to understand. Currently, again, the methadone clinic is operating, and again, we, I have not gotten a status update on current numbers that are currently being treated, so I will leave it at that.
All right. And seeing that our students are not in attendance, we'll move on to your superintendent's report.
Yes. So, one of the things I wanna allow for you to ask some questions around the results, and again, last time we told you or we talked with you, they were embargoed, then released, and so we did send you out some information in the packet. And again, this, I'm gonna ask for Stuart to kind of do a quick overview for you. I know a lot of you have had the opportunity to look at them, and you probably have some questions for us as well, so I'm gonna allow Stuart to give, again, a quick, quick overview and then open up for questions.
So, you know, just quickly, and as I know that David wrote in his summary, one of the pieces that we are particularly excited about is, is our continuing strong results in the high school, having the strongest scores in Chittenden County, and especially on the reading score, not only because 89 percent, if you do it by teaching year, 90 percent by the kids who are actually in the group in the class made the standard in reading, but the percentage of kids who had a four. That is, you know, usually we have mostly threes and then, you know, a quarter, maybe fours, which is, you know, proficient with distinction. But in the case was, the proficient with distinction was the big number. And we feel particularly good about that. I'd like to tell you that this is the first cohort that did humanities, and so there was a change in the curriculum. We don't have enough data long-term to know if that's, you know, and it was also the first ninth grade group to have computers. So, you know-
But wasn't this also the first year that they got exempt from the exam if they did well?
No, it's the second year, but not for English. You know, the key is to remember, it's in math.
Okay.
And the math scores have gone up, but that's still that question of having done the math. And unfortunately, the first cohort that all kids did algebra in a one-year at least as opposed to two-year algebra-
Right.
-is the 10th graders now, and they'll never take the kneecaps. So, we won't really know, you know, the S-Back will be all-new data, so we won't really know, you know, we believe that will make their scores better 'cause there won't be any kids in the end of sophomore year who wouldn't have geometry, at least, where in the past, some of them hadn't had geometry when they took the test. But, so, you know, overall, our scores have strong, if you look at our, you know, our results compared to Chittenden County, you can see that we've, we've done pretty well in most categories. We are looking at, you know, all those particular things that, you know, relate to, you know, where we don't do as strongly, and we also look at the cohort over time. And, you know, this is the last year of the kneecap, so next year, we'll be starting all-new data in a whole new way, and I can't tell you yet what that really looks like. So, if you have particular questions, I'd be happy to-
I do. I was really shocked with the writing.
In the eighth grade?
No, writing by gender, grades five and eight, and what happened to South Burlington males between last year and this year. Down 21 percent, and that's pretty significant. So, I just, no, I was just wondering if you could comment on that or-
Yeah, I, I can. I mean, actually, I've been looking at that data very strongly. I particularly, there are two pieces of data that I've been looking at. One is the fifth grade males, because if you remember when we did the science data last year, our male data, and those are the fourth graders, that is, this year's fifth graders, we had had consistent female, male, strong, exactly the same scores, and all of a sudden, the male scores in the science went down, that same cohort of males and females. So, there's clearly something going on with the fifth grade males, you know, that we're looking at. Because this is the second piece of data, not the first, 'cause we have the science data as well, that shows that, for whatever reason, after not having much difference between our females, males. For the eighth grade cohort, actually, you know, we look at that writing score at a variety of ways because it's not just the male piece which was big and significant, but we've always been up in the high 70s, 80s and 63 percent from 88 percent the previous year. But when we look at the data of when those kids were fifth graders, actually, they went up in terms of their writing. So, again, you have to remember, those are cohorts and, you know, the same teachers doing some of the same work that I know are strong teachers who last time, their kids were 80 percent. So, you know, it's not like there's new teachers, you know, we just have to continue to look what was that went on. Also, the writing test is the last test, and the kids knew it was the last kneecaps in the eighth grade. I don't know how much that had to do with kids at the last set of tests saying, hey, I'm done.
Will there be a way to sort of follow these students since we're moving to the S-Back to kind of really check in on their writing skills for the next?
Yes, in fact, well, I mean, so there are two aspects of this. One is, a difference between the S-Back and the kneecap is there's supposed to be a formative assessment piece that comes with the S-Back. So, we actually will be able to do formative work with the ninth and 10th graders, that is similar kind of work, which in the past, we really haven't had that. I mean, there've been sample questions, but they haven't been built in the same real way. So, or really, a lot of them, you know, there's like a couple. So, hopefully, there should be things that we'll be able to do with ninth and 10th graders that will give us a good example of how they'll do as 11th graders on the S-Back. The other piece is, in terms of everything, writing is part of the S-Back. So, it won't just be at fourth grade, fifth grade, eighth grade, and 11th grade that students will be assessed for writing. They'll actually be assessed third, fourth, fifth. So, over time, we'll really have more longitudinal data with the S-Backs related to writing.
You said, I'm sorry, can you say that again, third, fourth?
All, all grades that take the test will be tested in writing. It's integrated into the test.
Stuart, a written plan, like just kind of a bullet point, one pager that says, based on these results, these are the actions or the areas we're gonna follow up on?
So, each school has an improvement plan like that. In fact, four of our schools have to do that because their school's in need of improvement. So, those, they're now updating their plans based on this data, and even the school that's not, you know, quote, "in need of improvement," you know, does the same thing. So, that's what they're in the process of doing right now.
Yeah, certainly, those action plans are specific to the, to the data, you know, data results. And so, we absolutely can monetize those.
Is that, when are those, when do those typically come in?
We basically usually finish them in May, the action plans for the next year, and, 'cause we have to submit them to the state in August as part of our-
Is that something that could be a follow-up agenda item?
Sure.
Just to close the loop on the, on the results?
Yeah, what we're doing as a result of, you know, some of those very specific pieces. Again, I think what Stuart said is around the cohort tracking, again, where we're trying to go in the near future around our dashboard work around is making sure we have it right down to the student level, how children are progressing through our system based on the expectation and wants and needs. And so, that's really an important component for us to be able to do the things that we need to do at the right time and place developmentally. And we know that if kids are below on a certain area of our, let's say, formative assessments, we know we must do something, I'm gonna say, at the third grade, because we don't want that to perpetuate through to their older grades. And so, those are part of those action plan components.
The other piece is, if you just keep looking closely at the subgroups, you know, whether it's gender, poverty, kids getting special ed services, you know, these are, these are groups that some are just not progressing, you know, as the whole group still progresses, those lag in the, you know, behind.
And what are we gonna, what are we doing?
And we need to, we're, we are really trying to look at a universal design method that really looks at all those kids.
So, can you tell from this, from this data, which schools have made annual yearly progress, or is that a different?
Well, it's different 'cause the formula-
They wipe out the yearly progress.
Adequately yearly progress. So, let's put it this way, Martin. Last year, for example, the high school made adequately yearly progress, and our scores are better than last year, so one would assume that we had, except that last year, there were only 38 kids in the 11th grade in poverty, which meant that they were below the threshold of 40. There are 42 students in the 11th grade, so we probably didn't make adequately yearly progress even though our scores were higher, because a subgroup didn't make adequately yearly progress. And it's not all your kids, it's each subgroup, you know, as it were. So, I think Chamberlain might have, based on their scores, but again, you know, the formula really is not as simple as, oh, it's this many fours, this many threes. It's where you were when you were proficient, you know, the difference between being at the line and the next, and it's a fairly complicated piece. So, we are, and-
Everyone's dedicating to the law.
We, the state's not quite sure whether it'll be at the 2012 line or whether it's by the law, which is in 2014. Everybody's proficient, which means every school will be identified anyway, so.
Right, is that the current school year or next?
No, it's the current school year.
Based on these scores?
Based on these results right now, theoretically, all students need to be proficient. That's what No Child Left Behind says. However, you have to remember, there are 32 states that have waivers that are using the 2010 standards, so it's not quite clear what the federal government will allow the non-waivered states to do, because obviously, if one group of states is being held to 2014 while others are being held to 2010 standards, that's an interesting question. So, I don't know what the state's working with, with the feds, but we've heard to assume that all students must be proficient in 2014, in which case, no school in the state will probably have made adequately yearly progress.
So, so there's not, you don't know of any current efforts to seek a waiver at the state level?
I, I do think the state is discussing things with the Department of Ed. We have a new Secretary of Ed who I think is pretty proactive and really looking at a lot of these issues, but again, I just don't know.
One of the things that jumped out at me, and I think we've had this discussion in the past, although it's improved by 5 percent, is math at grade 11 in particular. I mean, and, and when you also look at SP assistance versus no assistance-
Right.
-that's, you know, at, at the aggregate level, that's still 43 percent of the students at grade 11 that are below standard.
Right. And, and again, Elizabeth, like I said, is, that's where we have really, last year, the last year's ninth graders, this year's 10th graders, we used to, I mean, math has always been the most homogeneous of subjects at the high school, and we tried to close that gap by last year, instead of having kids taking, used to take a group of them who had Algebra I Part I, Algebra I Part II. All kids were in algebra, some kids every day with supports, so that they would all be in geometry this year. So, that's a first part for this cohort, and we will never know in the kneecap world how successful that is, 'cause those kids won't take the kneecap. The math department right now is even retooling the ninth grade again for this coming year. I have to tell you, the work that they've been trying to do, you know, in terms of really looking at the Common Core in ninth grade and trying to create a situation where all students get the same math with the supports they need, so that theoretically, all kids could get to pre-calc by the time they were seniors. So, that's an experiment, I don't know exactly, but, you know, I think the kids are trying really hard, but you've either had the math on the test or you haven't, and there is still a large percentage of our kids in the 11th grade now who have not, who are doing geometry now, and so they did not have the, the math that's on the test, which is geometry by the end of 10th grade.
And if there were one or two areas that jumped out to you or administration, what would they be?
Well, I mean, that, again, that, the question of math has always been one of them, and that's why we've been working on, you know, creating a situation where, you know, kids have, all kids have the math that, and, and the other piece is, you know, is that gender question and the poverty question. You know, our gains in poverty, you know, gender's like a new thing. We've always been pretty good in gender, and all of a sudden, we're seeing, you know, at least in a couple of cohorts, a gender issue that was not there, if you look at our, you know, data long-range. But we've always had the poverty issue, and we've made some gains, we've made better gains in some schools than others. Sometimes because there's more poverty there, we're able to put more supports there, but as the demographic of the city, you know, has shifted, you know, our poverty is increasing, you know, certainly not to the extent of some of the communities that surround us, but we need to, you know, make accommodations that, you know, are ongoing.
This is, again, part of our, our system around, again, using our data, looking at the MTSS work that we're doing, and again, we've got some targeted, specific time administrative to be able to look at the data and map out kind of where we are and how we're gonna make sure that, you know, all of these factors are making sure that we're providing the necessary supports. And again, I, I know it's probably really confusing for you folks, you know, 'cause you're in it every day, but we've got the Common Core, we've got the assessments that are here, we have our current ones, we have some of the known changes, you know, that are happening, and how we make that all congeal is really an important conversation for us to make sure our kids are getting what they need as they progress. So, I'm really happy with the work and the conversation and the depth of the conversation. Again, we, we've gotta get it, you know, right down then to the action steps needed, you know, at, at each and every school and each and every classroom. So, that's our work ahead.
Any other questions? Good. Thank you, Stuart. Thanks. All right, we'll move, you've got other items on the superintendent's report, David?
Yes, and so, I wanted to provide an update on the RFP for the audit for teacher performance, and right now Karen and Diane, or Diane is, we've got a meeting on Friday, and although I don't have confirmed attendance by either one of the folks that have submitted or wanted to submit, I, I'm hoping that we'll at least have one. So, there's been a fair amount of reach-out. I don't know if they're just out of town. It's been an ongoing kind of email connect.
So, who are you trying to talk to?
Well, one is, the one that comes to mind right now is Bonnie Poe, who was a submitter, and, you know, had actually put a lot of work into it, and so I'm hopeful she'll be on the phone, able, or able to come. She certainly expressed quite a bit of interest in wanting to give the feedback. So, again, we're kind of in the badgering stage right now around, around that, but I don't know if she's out of town, and so, it's been a week and a half, the email's been out. So, the idea of this is, again, I outlined some steps previously to the board around kind of some options. The hope is, is to hear some information from Bonnie, reframe maybe what that might be, and then for me to be able to, you know, fairly quickly respond and get, get it, get it moving, you know, again.
So, you said it was a couple people, David, Bonnie, and who else?
I don't, I can't remember the, the other firm.
Okay.
Can you remember, Stuart? But, anyway, there's, there's a couple that I know that have expressed interest, and I'm hoping for sure to have one, you know, be able to communicate.
If anybody else would like to join us for a meeting Friday afternoon at four-
Friday at four.
So, I mean, as long as there are only two of us and not three, it'd be fun.
So, anyway, it's, it's long overdue, and I know, you know, I've got my feedback. I don't need your feedback, really. I know it's overdue, and I'm trying to get this resolved. So, I'd like to get some, get that, get this moving forward.
David, if we can't get more than one person on the phone, is there another way that we could get feedback?
Well, I, I certainly have talked to, in this case, both, one of them, and I know the other has provided rationale for, you know, why they were initially interested and then not. So, I, I can certainly give an overview, you know, to what the response was.
I just, I-
But it would be far better that they, they give it to you.
Is, is there anybody that we would want to include that it was either initially sent to and they didn't respond, or we thought of since?
Sure. I, I mean, I can certainly bring in some of those other folks.
I'm thinking, we, we got a name from Gallagher, right? I mean, Gallagher might be one, but didn't they refer?
Yeah, Cope Associates.
Yeah, Cope. Maybe Cope and Gallagher, and I think you had another one as well. And I don't know if we had any other.
The guy's name, Gallagher, Frank, and I forget his last name, but I can find it.
I think it might be helpful before we think about tweaking or changing the scope or to our, the RFP that we sent out before-
Assuming that it's not, yeah.
-to find out-
It would be nice to get more feedback, yeah.
-why people like not have responded at all, or why they went through part of the process but didn't continue.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll see what we can make going on that. And then fundraising, again, there's, there's some information on the fundraising, and again, John, Karen, high school representation has been a committee with this particular charge from me around looking at fundraising in a more comprehensive way. This is, you know, it's easy to say, let's just come up with procedures, but it's very, very entailed, and I'm happy for the, the work. I've been able to get some status checks along the way. One thing I think is important is about where we are currently. In other words, you know, as a result of kind of going through reevaluation of fundraising policies and practices, what are we currently doing?
Mm-hmm.
And so, I think it's important that you know that we are continuing to practice our current procedures. I would be remiss to say that, are we catching everything that's happening? And I would say currently, no, we aren't. I mean, there's some things that are happening, you know, either, you know, through an adjunct of a PTO that we're not finding out until kind of after the fact, and so we are working to try to hone in on all of those types of situations at the present time while we look to implement something more comprehensive. I think the other part is that the audit is gonna be a really important component for this, you know, and John, I don't know, can you provide a little bit of additional clarity around what the audit would likely- And John, I don't know, can you provide a little bit of additional clarity around what the audit would likely provide?
Well, yeah, next, in, in the packet at your desk is the audit report, the management letter, my transmittal letter, and my response to the management letter. And student activities is written up in there, district-wide, not high school, not middle school. The auditor's concerned is everything doesn't come through our office, through the general ledger, so that it's transparent. And until we get to that point, I don't think anybody can say, I can't say that we're great with fundraising across the board. So that's, that's, we're, that's a sneak preview of next week, but that's.
Current procedure required that one pager go through the business office?
It, it goes only to the building level. So when I have to, if I have to follow up on that, I have to get it from, from that group. We reconcile their bank statements, that's all after the fact.
But wasn't, wasn't that going to be part of just the, the quick kind of interim fix of just getting the building folks to copy the, the business office on those?
And I, I think, again, I think we definitely, that's improved, but there are still, what I would say, and I'm not using the right word, but kind of the adjunct things that are happening through some of these, you know, other groups. And I think they're all well-intended, but, you know, we're finding out still after the fact, it's like, and, and even the administrators, in some cases, don't know about them, so.
But if I were to, I mean, when we asked this question last year, we asked if we went to John, would, could we look at a file of, of the forms? And at that time, it was no. So would there be, even if it's not complete, would there be a file full of forms this year?
Definitely more than we've had in the past. To say that it's one hundred percent would be wrong, you know, it's not, because we're not catching still all of them. And that's part of the, the fix that, you know, we're going to need to make a pretty strong stand to say there can be no fundraising, you know. And that means zero that's going to have any benefit to a student in this public school of South Burlington, unless it comes through this process.
David, why can't that happen while, even while the committee's doing their work?
A part of that is that somebody's always given, you know, some money, you know, and it filters in, and we find out that it was given to a certain teacher for, you know, a certain social event, right? But they gave a hundred dollars, that's a, that's a violation. And so, it's those, those things like that, I mean, that I'm, just wanting to be honest, that I, I feel like we've got to get ourselves in a better place around that common understanding. Again, I think we've made remarkable improvements, but, you know, you're going to see some very specific things and directions in the next step to be put in place, that, I don't know that everybody will like, but it's going to be important.
David's been pretty clear with the administrators directed, and the, the process we have now out there, use these forms. So they're there now. I'll give you an example of something that happened, one of the recent play. Someone set up a website on Eventbrite, and people were buying tickets online. That, I had nothing, I had no knowledge of that, and the administrators were pretty surprised too. So, it's the kind of things we have to, it, it's a, I, I wrote in, I helped David write this, and I wrote in here, it's a different world, we don't just pay with checks and cash now, and people are thinking of all these things, PayPal and even Amazon, and all these kind of things that, that our kids maybe are adept at and some of our teachers, but they're not. They don't think, well, what's that, what's my role with the district? It's, it, it's, it's a big, it's a big issue, anyway.
Well, it may be premature, but I, when I was reading through this, it, you know, we may need to wait till the committee's done their work, but we may need a board policy on fundraising, we may need to add a policy about this, because I feel like we're going to need some oversight based on all the areas there are to fall, especially if it's an audit issue.
Well, if we talk, if we think about policy governance, would that fall under, I don't have the policies in front of me, under financial? Under what?
Protection of assets.
Yeah.
Either two four, two five.
Or, or financial, yeah.
I think so, right, again, I think it would fall under that, I mean, I'm not saying.
It, it could already gets reported under what it was.
But I'm just, but.
You're wanting to put a little more.
There needs to be some meat behind it, and.
Well, I guess, you know, I'm taking slightly counter view of this, I mean, or at least try to balance this, because I, I also don't want to make it so difficult for parents to be able to contribute. You know, the person who gives a hundred dollars to help something out, I mean, I don't want to dissuade parents from being able to contribute to those kind of things either, and I assume that the committee is considering that aspect as well.
John?
The, the P T Os, since we established the registration and where they dict, um, dictate, or not dictate, but say what their budget's going to be, and the principal approves it, it's been wonderful. So what you're saying, Martin, that's not going to be an issue. It's, and, and it, like in the middle school, we've done a lot of work, and their, their fundraising has really, really come up quite a bit, but they have a manual checkbook still. You don't see the checks, I don't see the checks. One person in my office reconciles that monthly, the bookkeeper does a, the secretary at that middle school does a really good job. But, who knows, you know, and when, then when the auditors go to look at it, if there's sales tax paid, it's already done. Receipt missing, already done, that's the, that's the problem.
So, we, I mean, we have an obligation, that if there's money coming in that's going to, to students, that it needs to be accounted for. And I think as Martin said, we, we don't want to be a district that doesn't accept any sort, but it needs to be done in an organized way, so it can get to all students, and doesn't, you know, have a, have an issue of, you know, kind of a discriminatory feel to it. And I think, again, as John said, P T Os, again, as we've put some clarity into their particular role, then that may be the place where we end up going, to say, when you do want to give to a cause, then this would be the place and the purpose, and we've outlined kind of the criteria for the P T Os, for instance, to make sure that they're following the expectations, so. Anyway, we've made, I mean, there's been a lot of movement in this area. I think it would have been probably nice for me to give you some ongoing updates on this, but I really feel that, you know, there's going to be a much improved process, and we're currently holding ourselves accountable, you know, to our expectations now.
In, in order of magnitude, I think we, I think you reported this out, John, at one point. I mean, we're talking kind of in the half million dollar range?
I think there's some variability between, you know, you know, years around certain initiatives that might be going on, but I think pretty, pretty average is right around that five hundred thousand dollar range. So anyway, that's, that's all I have, again. This won't be too long before you get a, more of a, a final update, as we want to have this put in place for, you know, the start of the new school year. So, again, I want to thank John and his committee, they've been working hard on this, so.
And I don't, I don't know if you covered it in the update, but I assume that as part of that rollout, there would be training provided during the first couple of days, because that would roll down to the staff level, yeah. All right, we'll shift on to agenda item eleven, an administrative report and discussion on inter-district collaboration opportunities.
So this is in your, in your packet as well. And I think it was just important for us to make sure that, you know, you folks are aware of some of the things that we do around inter-district collaboration, and some of these have been around for quite some time. For instance, the Vermont School Board Insurance Trust multiline is a good example. I think a newer example for us is the, is the, our Food Service Association Buyers Group that we've formed. And again, I don't, I don't really need to read those to you, again, happy to answer questions that you might have around some of the work we do. I think this is a really critical component for us as we move forward around opportunities in our future, around savings, and more district collaboration, and what that might look like. But these have certainly been, you know, areas that have really helped us.
So David, these are ones that are in play at the first time?
Correct, currently in play.
You mentioned that there are lots of other places that you're trying to feel out opportunities?
Yeah, I'm not sure, you know, lots is necessarily, I, I feel like there's opportunities out there, Dan, and certainly through the budget process, certainly through communication within the Superintendent's Association that I've had, I, I believe there are effective opportunities around us.
Do you see anything as a result of the current budget situation in a lot of the surrounding districts that there may be some interest in people being a bit more interested?
Perhaps, I haven't had the conversation as, you know, because I didn't, wasn't sure of the, what the outcome of their budgets were. But prior to even the budget decisions, I think some of the folks that, you know.
On the way over here today, I think I heard that thirty-four school districts in the state.
Thirty-four schools that didn't pass, right.
School budgets, not districts.
That's correct. There's, there's currently ongoing conversations, I mean, I've, I've been opening up and having these conversations, and I, you know, we're, we're going to visit some of our neighboring Chittenden County schools to talk about, you know, with principals and curriculum coordinators around those types of things, and that's been part of our outreach. So I think those opportunities definitely are upon us for additional ones that might be added to this list.
How about I T with, like, everybody having, or a lot of people having an initiative in terms of one-to-one? Could we get a buying group to get a better discount, like even in Chittenden County?
Yeah, those are, again, the I T pieces on, on here, I think, too.
It's on here at the bottom, but this doesn't say anything about an actual, I mean, it seems like if we were to partner with those people, we would get.
Again, we, we, and again, Stuart can comment a little bit on this, so on that work, you know, our, our I T folks, because they're so connected, we've, we've done a lot of that work in, in modeling some of the technology pieces, so I know that that was one that.
Actually, you know, the state was looking to do this as a state level, our prices were better. Yeah, Mike Vining, I have to tell you, is a wizard, which is not to say that we shouldn't keep pursuing, because obviously volume is volume, you know, and of course, we are still a substantial volume even by ourself, but we've, we've had some very, you know, good below-market values, and, you know, the state was looking, because like a state like Maine, which provides, they were looking at least to maybe be a buyers group, maybe even be a buyers group with other states. But the quotes that were coming out were not as good as what individual districts were being able to get, at least at this time. But it is being looked at, because clearly, yeah, you know, it's, it's a lot of business.
It's not only, you know, the equipment, it's also the service and instructional opportunities. And I think, you know, those are, those are some, those are some much higher dollar captures that I think are going to be around the corner. Are going to need to be around the corner, so.
I don't want to step on Stuart at all, but prior to Stuart's being over I T, Mike has come to me many times, and we researched, why can't we buy computers for Burlington and South Burlington and Colchester? Legally, we can't, we're distinct school districts, so the effort that Stuart was talking about with the state is really important. And because that's where we have to go.
I don't understand that, because we work in, in different capacities, where we are the financial manager for grants and things that cover other schools.
Well, there, there is, the government pricing, and I, I'm, I'm far from a lawyer. All I remember is the gist of, we can't buy a, couldn't be the lead, and then supply them to another district legally, the way the contracts, the Dell particularly.
So does the food service thing provide a model for how this can work? And my understanding is that there's some cooperative arrangement on.
Is a buyers group going to purchase?
You know, possibly, yes, that's, that's a good idea, yeah.
And I have a question now, and I maybe forgot how this got approved last year, but when we participate in this Food Service Directors Association, I, I recall some of, like, the Reinhardt bids being brought to the board for approval. And would that still happen?
I, I don't think so, we.
Did you see one last year?
You didn't, because we went with, this was, we signed up for this group in March last year, it's been a year.
Yeah, I just can't recall how recently.
Same with, same with the custodial, we used to do that every year, and, and we don't. You know, I don't know legally if we need to.
If we're part of an approved buyers group, that's not been, I mean, we don't have to do that. Again, I think it's certainly important for the board to know, you know, our, our saving, you know, where we're, you know, our price points, but.
It just makes all sense in the world to do that.
That's right.
Well, although, although.
If there are some statutory or other hurdles are in the way, maybe we ought to go attack those barriers.
That's right, that's right.
Yeah, I mean, this buyers group concept is great, I do, I would ask the question, though, what our obligation is, if we have certain levels of expenses that typically would go out as an R F P, if we're part of a buyers group, do we have to still follow the process where that is a board-level approved? Or that might not be the right. Criteria, but is there, does that, you know, override, does a buyers group override the R F P process?
Particularly with those higher, higher dollar items, right?
So what seems to be missing from here to me is any collaboration in delivering instruction or options or opportunities to students? And I'm wondering if, what is being done in that area? I don't, I don't know if there are those opportunities. I know that Winuski and Burlington are in discussions that may lead to some of that, at least between those two districts. And shouldn't we be looking at those options as well, or if we have, could you report on that?
Sure, there are current things that are in place, the Vermont Learning Network, V L T C. And the L N V, Vermont Learning Network. So those are two things that are currently available to us to do some shared instructional pieces. In addition, what I've just told you is part of our reach out to other communities, Winuski, Colchester, C V U, our opportunities to talk about our programs together, and what we might be doing, or how we could do that differently. Also, higher education, and I think I've reported out to our, kind of our business connect, that the administrators and I have gone to Champlain College, and also I've now gone to U V M, and asking some of these very questions around, you know, dual enrollment options, how that can take some load or opportunities for our students. So we're in those discussions that I think are ripe to frame up a little bit more than we currently do. I think one of the areas that we really have to be careful of is that, although technology plays a major role, I think we have to be careful around developmental applicable resourcing, so that there's kind of a hybrid approach to, you don't just put a student in front of, you know, a computer and say the course is now done. There's a lot more that needs to be done with that. So, we're, we're, we're definitely asking those questions we have now for about a year and a half, and wanting to see some of those things happen in a more formed way.
Yeah, I guess, I'm, I'm interested in understanding whether there are viable options. You know, if there's, if, it just doesn't make sense for, for us to really put a lot of effort into dual enrollment with our enrollment in other high schools or something like that. But I mean, just, it would be nice to know what, what is a viable thing that can be done, number one. And then the second is what kind of roadblocks or barriers there might, might be? Is there contract problems that we should start looking at? But I think if we want to expand what we're doing in, I don't know, I wouldn't call consolidating learning in Chittenden County, but making more use of each other's resources, we need to plan that out, because there could be contract issues and other issues that we would have to work out.
So part of it is, yes, there's always contractual things that I think we need to be looking at. I think what, what's being clear here, and again, because we're, we've just been passing through a budget process that we know has been fairly tight, we're going to talk about that in a second. I think what we're all trying to talk about is increased opportunities for students at the most efficient way in which we can provide it to our, you know, to our students. And so those are the very conversations that we've been having, and I think because of the budget and some of the current situations that are around us, I think it's going to drive the conversation to be more prudent now. We could talk in general around higher, certain different programs that you, your school offers that mine doesn't. A P programs that mine doesn't, that yours does, and that's a very simple way to look at it, that your school could do this, and my school could do this. And we could have it so that students utilize technology some of the time, and it. And we could have it so that students utilize technology some of the time and a teacher travels some of the time. And those are some of the very, very specific perhaps ideas that we're, we're wanting to explore. Again, yeah, is there some complications around travel and contract? Absolutely. But I think th- these are the conversations that I've been wanting to have now for, you know, a year and a half. And we, we are asking them, as well as asking them of higher education, particularly around our students being able to in the past take college-level courses. But now dual enrollment, currently being paid for by the Ed Fund, but won't be paid by the Ed Fund in the future. How does that economic trigger work for us or, or not? And so those are, again, we want to really make sure that we're looking at it from the benefit of the student and student opportunities, but at an efficiency model. And currently, I would say that our, our model is, we provide good opportunities, but I wouldn't say that it's extremely efficient.
Yeah, one, you know, it seems to me, this, this has been an ongoing conversation. It, it feels like a, a couple of pilots would be a way to go, just to propose where we know. A good example, I mean, I've heard that before of AP classes where you could have sort of a traveling instructor. The districts could share costs and you'd have sort of a, a hybrid model of, of virtual participation in the classroom with the teacher being there some of the time. I think some of the smaller courses that don't require a full-time educator, maybe some of the, the languages at the high school level where the schools could also kind of say, okay, we're, you know, between us, we need a full-time Japanese instructor or whatever it might be. So still offer it and have some critical mass of students, but not have point-two of an FTE for six students at our one high school, for instance. I, you know, I wonder if the, the administration can start thinking in terms of what would be sort of two or three pilot opportunities that we could go out to other Chittenden County schools and say, you know, let's, let's fund these together and let's just see that they work, what problems come up. Because I think, I, I hear what Martin's saying, which is, you know, it's hard to even get something off the ground without, you know, understanding where the, where the need is. So I, I think understanding the need is what
Yeah.
all of you do really well every day. And then maybe just piloting a few options to meet the need and figuring out if it's cost-effective.
I think, you know, we're on the same page and this, this, we've already, I mean, it's, it's hard for me to give you too much because then I would, you know, I, I need to let these conversations happen, but we're, we're definitely on that. And I'd like to see that happen, particularly with some of the folks that I've currently mentioned in, in a pilot. And I will say that, you know, last week I, I, I did go to the House and Senate Ed testimonies that were, were given around particularly the, the governance structure of education. And I think that while I think there was some really good discussion, I think we're absent of some of the, like, let's do it and then allow the policies to unfold around it, as opposed to try to revamp the whole policy without understanding kind of the, you know, the, the shorter-term gain. And so that's, that's really exactly what I'm looking to do. And I think I'll be able to report back to you in the next couple of months, I think, around some of these ideas that are, would hopefully likely unfold as, as options and opportunities for us.
You know, what might be helpful, it sort of seems like an ideal time as students have put in their requests for courses for next year. I would like to know sort of what are those courses that don't quite meet the threshold? So maybe four students sign up, so there's not enough, you know, to actually offer a section? I'd be interested in knowing what are those courses and, and are those happening at other schools as well? And would that be a place to start, perhaps?
Yes, and we, and again, we've been a district that has really worked hard to make sure that we don't limit those, even those smaller numbers. And we've worked out ways to try to make that happen, although as budgets continue, that's going to become harder and harder. So those may be some of the areas where we say, hey, six students and five students and three students, can we do, you know, can we do this? Those, because there's a, you know, a consistency around those lower numbers. And to take it away from a student is, is wrong, you know? So anyway, that's good, I, good, I think absolutely. I'd love to be a little bit more detailed on that, but again, there's some pretty exciting conversations going on right now around options.
I think in the, in the absence of detail, you've got a board that's brainstorming.
Yeah, no, it's excellent. You know what?
Maybe not so much, but.
No, and what I hope is, is that other, other boards are watching you and listening. And I think part of it is, we got to get out of our own silos. If we're going to, particularly given the, the current financial future of education, we're going to have to get out of our silos and do it differently. Otherwise, we're going to have to make our silos a lot smaller.
All right. Oh, Julie.
So David or John, does one of you know, I know in 2016 that we assume the liability for that dual enrollment. Does one of you know what that liability is roughly?
I don't. And again, we would have to assume the number of students that would take advantage of it. So, you know, we'd have to do some estimating around that. I don't know what the, do you know what the cost is expected, John? You don't, do you?
I talked to Patrick about it. I did know, I.
Yeah, I. It's not, I will tell you that it's, it's not a great benefit.
It's not significant?
Uh, there's a, there's a threshold number, and I'm going to generally say it's around, you know, six students or so. Once it goes beyond six students, we're better off to be teaching it ourselves. So again, I, again, I don't, I mean, there's definitely some checks and balances, but that's part of the infusion of a, of a dual option program where kids can take for free this year, but then it starts to wind in. We have to, we really have to be mindful of, you know, the total cost exposure. So.
But we, do we, as a district, we don't have a choice about the offering after 2016, right?
Right, unless we have some other sort of opportunities, you know, that are identified for students that, or agreements that can happen. And that's part of the, you know, kind of the, the ongoing dialogue right now is to say, opportunities for our students and how we can make that, make that work, perhaps at the same time when the mandates are happening around the, the dual enrollment case.
Is it a point that, that we're going to be paying more money for the dual enrollment classes?
We're going to have to pay.
We have to pay it all as of 2016.
Yeah, after a certain point.
Right.
An unfunded mandate.
Right.
Correct. And those are some of the things that we, that we did put into our kind of dialogue between our, our local legislators around these unfunded, you know, mandates. And I think that that certainly, from my perspective, was really, really clear in the folks that testified, you know, in front of the House and Ed, House and Senate Ed committees. We'll see. And they're, they're currently in that, trying to figure out what they're going to do next.
All right. We'll move on to voting and budget results. And let me preface that by congratulating everybody on the budget and the bond passing and also acknowledging David and his administrative team and John Stewart and the business office for a job well done.
Thank you, Elizabeth.
And, and thanking the community for the support as well.
So, you know, I think, like so many things, the, the data kind of tells the story. What we put together is really, I think, the long sheet is probably the one that's of the most value to the, to the board. The other one was kind of the, the short version that, that you all did in providing input to Elizabeth last night and then to me before we actually had the, the firmed up information. And then coupled with that is the, the work around voter information overview. And again, Martin, last year, along with Ray Mann and myself, worked, put this together. And I think that really helps to tell the story. While I think we are, as Elizabeth stated, really, you know, pleased that we're in this, I think we also need to have a, a critical eye on what it tells us, particularly now and into the future, around expectations around funding. So the short, the short version is that it didn't pass by that much. We have a good number of our community out there that are definitely exhibiting concerns about the school budget. You know, forty-eight percent of our community are saying we're concerned about the increases that are currently happening with the school. And that's significantly different than what went on at the city in terms of, of their, their numbers. So I think it's quite telling to the work that I have ahead, along with you, around how we're going to move forward. So one thing I wanted to do before you just ask questions is on page five of the voter information, is it page five? Which is the data table. There needs to be a rotation of, on the very bottom right, under, on the table of 2013 and 14. You need, you just need, you need to move those around. So in seven-four in 2013, it was not seventeen, it's actually twenty-four percent. The very bottom right, four blocks, just need to rotate.
Well, I think actually what needs to change is the line, the lines in the graph. I believe that seven-four, which says it's the green line, is actually seven-three. I think those, those two are the ones that are switched.
Let's see, you're thinking the lines are wrong?
Yeah, the lines are wrong. This, this purple line is actually seven-four. That green line is actually seven-three. Because I'm pretty sure seven-four.
Well, I'll, I'll send you the corrected, the corrected five. It's page five, the, the numbers are, are wrong.
The numbers are, yeah, the numbers are just inconsistent between the graph and the tables. All it's just something to.
Right. So. The rotation. I'll, I'll send you the, the corrected one. Again, I think for, for the purpose of tonight's discussion, we're providing an overview from the last, from yesterday's results. And again, the long sheet certainly tells the majority of the story. So anyway, I know that some of you maybe had a, a chance to look at some of this.
I have a question, David. How do we know what's official? So, you know, CCTV puts out information and then we don't put out information until we hear from Donna. And I just, lots of people have already been watching. So how do we know the final scoop?
Well, I think it, this is, you know, the power of information and technology is quite a thing because, I mean, I was trying to be responsive to all of you, but then I heard a lot of you were being either tweeted or tweeting and, or, or seeing on channel seventeen. And really, the way it was left to me is that Donna, and I think for all of us, is that she really is our, our official that provides the information. So I don't necessarily, I can't, I don't know where channel seventeen was getting their information. What we did hear is it did check out with our information in, in the collection that happened at Chamberlain, Tuttle, and at Orchard. But I think it's really important for us to make sure in the future probably that we, we wait until, in this case, you know, the clerk is able to provide, you know, with clarity, which wasn't that far, you know, that much after the time we, we saw some of that. Well, maybe that's not true.
That's what I thought. So I waited till I heard from Donna before I, by then, it had already been.
Yeah, eight fifty-two, I think, was when I, when I got the, the email from Donna. And, you know, she had put the, this information together and sent it out. I, I think it's, you know, it, it turned out to be appropriate. There were some things in there around, you know, absentee ballots, you know, accuracy, you know, of, of the data. So again, I think it's important that we probably, in the future, just make sure we all agree that, and I, I certainly need to make sure that Donna gets us, you know, the stuff probably before it gets to channel seventeen. If she's the one issuing it to seventeen, I haven't talked to her about that, but.
Yeah, a couple of things that, that I noted is, is first off, I was at Chamberlain last night. And Chamberlain, which is District seven-four, is the one polling location that actually defeated the school budget. And then when we were collecting these, these raw data from the polls, which actually turned out to be pretty accurate, we had collected seven-two and seven-three. And that the sum of those three polling locations actually had the budget being defeated by twelve votes. So it was, I mean, some of this is the timing of when they came in, but, you know, it was really Orchard that, that put the, put the budget over the top by the hundred and thirty-three votes, or about a hundred and twenty at that point. The other thing I noted is that when, David, when you said sort of half, you know, forty-eight percent of the, the votes are sort of, you know, sending a message that, you know, they're not approving the budget, it's really twelve percent are saying, registered voters are saying they voted down the budget and about thirteen percent are saying they approve the budget. So we have about twenty-five percent of the total registered voters who weighed in on this budget. So it continues to be a relatively small representation of our voters and our taxpayers. And that makes it a, even a smaller representation. So some of the takeaways for me was really, what do we need to be doing in a district like Chamberlain to really, is it better, more information, better information? It's hard to say. And then really to kind of get to the voters who are not weighing in. And then lastly, I, you know, I think there's a lot of good trending information, but the, we've got six years of, of voter history here. And two thousand nine was the, the most, the tightest budget year we've had in the recent past, or at least it's documented here, and it passed by six votes. If you look at the spread for the following five years inclusive of the recent budget, this was the tightest year we've had. And, and the spread was, you know, basically four percent. And it was, it was fairly significantly higher in three of the other four years, but, but higher in all four years. So again, from a trending standpoint, that's something to take into account. And I, I think we knew going into it because of the, the tax rate increase, we knew we should expect some pressure there.
Yeah, I think this, as you said, this is telling and maybe there's some efforts around going out to the different districts. When you look at that page number four, which shows the actual votes cast versus the total number of voters in the, in the respective, you know, in the city, it's quite telling.
And do we have that by voter district? Yeah, we think we have it on the following. So seven-four was at eighteen percent. That was our low. And seven-two was at twenty-nine percent.
Yeah, and again, this one, there, there is some flip-flopping here that.
Oh, actually, yeah, it would be, yeah.
Yeah. So I need to, we'll correct that. But nonetheless, you're right that we definitely, there, there's, and I think you appropriately said that it's not forty-eight, said, no, it's, you know, it's much smaller percent of the total number of eligible voters. So, you know, is it going out to seven-four through a postcard or something and saying, how could we better, you know, receive your feedback? Or how, you know, whatever. I don't know. But it is, I don't, I don't also know what, what is the typical trend, you know, around the state of Vermont, around total number of voters and votes cast? Are we the lowest? Are we in the average? That probably would be, be interesting. But nonetheless, we, we'd certainly like to see those come together, which is part of the work, why, why we did this. So. So I'll, I'll make that change and I think it would be good for us to maybe post this up where people can look at it. And I think we should have it on a future agenda item to say what actions might we want to have. It's always hard to have them, you know, after because then it's the, oh, we should have done this. The time is right, maybe, to do some things now and perhaps with our PACS group and some of our PTOs is to reach out and say, help us, you know?
Could we maybe consider posting these on the website in place of where we have the, the current?
Voter, yeah. I haven't taken that down yet, actually. So it's, that's a good idea.
It strikes me that the same vote is voting city objects as the schools' objects. So we probably ought to go on the list, and maybe it already is on your list, with, with this council to discuss this, this voter demographics.
Again, this is part of what I said when we got to city-school collaboration is, although I didn't say that officially, but I think it's, it's kind of on our.
It'd be interesting to know why, why people go out to vote. Do they go out to vote for the school issues? Do they go out to vote for the city issues? Combination?
And I, I would say, and this is more of an anecdotal observation, but I would say the feedback that I received personally in the sense that I got through school board emails or calls or questions was not reflective of forty-eight percent of voters saying no to the budget. So I, I would have expected more pushback. And I don't know how to interpret that, except, you know, we're just, we're, minds made up before there was any evaluation of what was in the budget and what it covered or didn't cover. And it was just, that's a big tax increase and not acceptable. I, I don't know. But the, the level of noise around the school budget and that tax rate increase, I don't think was, I, I wouldn't have anticipated, you know, almost half the voters who did vote turning down the budget.
I think that. I think that.
And, and approving the, and a disproportionate, approving the bond, yeah. 68% approving the bond.
And I think one of the things that really is challenging, and actually, I had this conversation with Stuart and John, and probably some of you, is that I, when we have a 3.05% budget increase, about an eight and a half percent tax rate increase, that just doesn't compute to people very well. And I think then, then it doesn't, it gets very, very difficult for, for folks to really clearly understand that. And I think that's in part some of the issues that, you know, is happening across the state. And we don't, those surprises, as you know, even last year came when people got their tax bills and said, really? I thought our increase was only, you know, 2.09%. And it was X. So that's, that is actually one of the things that we also address is some, you know, some funding formulas, formula simplicity around, around how this is going to, you know, work into the future. So anyway. Well, we'll, we'll, we'll definitely talk about it, city-school stuff, and I'll post it up on the website. It was, but then, again, we certainly want to thank voters for, for voting, yeah.
All right. We'll move on to setting the agenda for the March 19th meeting.
So I do want to add, I, we do need to add the Activities Director hire on there for action. And.
Should we add a report out on the RFP since?
Yeah, I, I put that on there too. I think that would be good.
Is it there?
Just an update. No, it was on my note here, but can't read my writing. Not good. And I, I, I would like to, I'm going to ask that we, if you're okay with it, to kind of put a reoccurring agenda item on the kind of fifth grade, as we do kind of with methadone? If you're okay with that, just to, we'll keep that as a reoccurring kind of update for board.
Well, and maybe, maybe six will come off.
Yeah.
After.
After the 17th, yeah. So.
On future agenda items, could we just add action plans for the kneecap results? That was something we talked about tonight.
See, you're always picking things up.
Yeah, I know, she's.
The other thing we need to add is the filing of, you know, whatever the collaborative projects are.
Funding collaboratives, yeah. Or interdisciplinary, or interdistrict.
Elizabeth, I, I want to just be clear that Ron Smith is coming. And he, he, he could come in person if it's after eight o'clock. So this is, eight twenty's a good time.
Okay. We'll, we'll work around that timeframe.
Is that on here or anywhere?
It's on, yes, under.
Two, four?
Two point four, Financial Conditioning Activities.
So is it, is it two, seven that Martin and I are doing then?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And are, we're going to have that sometime before this meeting?
I've been, I'm two days in on it already.
Oh, you do? Okay.
Yes. Don't know how long, more, but.
Okay.
Are there any, okay, I'll go ahead and ask Dan. Are there any future agenda items that we could use just as a quick report and take them off the future agenda?
I hope to get some more information on the Chamberlain grant. I'm hoping that that can get, you know, some targeted dates and positioning. So I hope that one will come off, but.
Like the, the social networking, I would like to just ask a little bit about that. Is that something that we need a presentation? Or I, I don't remember how that was added.
Can we talk about, like, the resource officers, at least, or at least chatting with them about some of our liability and risk associated with social, social media?
Yep. And so in regard to that, we've done some work, Karen. I've asked Karen to do that. We've met with the three school resource officers and Trevor. And so we've got some notes and some directions. We're looking at some model procedures and policies that are out there right now. So that's kind of where that is at. But so I, I'd like to try to get that one to come off. But I haven't, I haven't seen anything from them yet, so as soon as I do.
So it would be too premature for the 19th?
Mm-hmm.
Anything else? What is the tuition students' private paying? Some of these have been on here for a while that I can't, I can't remember, like what they are.
We know you're a good placeholder. You, you, yeah, you need to help remember all these for us.
That's related to 129.
Yes, so partly to 129, but then it was also to open up how we would accept even private pay, because right now we don't have. And so what are our liabilities and, and opportunities in this particular area kind of factored in with?
It was kind of an offset to the revenue.
Correct.
Issue of Act 129, right?
Yep.
And this was one, if I recall, there were decisions made at the board level probably in the past five or six years that we took tuition paying off.
Correct. Yep. So I, I need to, I can, I need to resurface that a little bit, but part of this is mixed in with some of the other initiatives that we, we talked about earlier around efficiencies and collaborating with other districts, so.
Well, the last other thing I wonder about is whether some of these could be at our retreat. So we do have that coming up.
What's the date on the retreat?
Good question. I don't know.
You know, what are our priorities?
Do you know, Meg? Is it?
It's March something.
Yeah.
It's like the 27th, is it? I don't know.
Let's see. We put it on there as a placeholder, I think.
Oh, that's cool.
So maybe we should add to this agenda a retreat agenda discussion.
For our next meeting, yeah.
On the future agenda items at future agenda.
I'd actually put it on.
What we want to have then for the retreat items, yeah. And that, some of these could be done.
And that could take some things off the list, I think. Good, good question, good observation.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think you've all said yes to the retreat, which is the 26th, Martin? I think everybody's.
Twenty-sixth at six o'clock.
Okay.
Didn't we decide we weren't going to call it retreat anymore? It's a work session?
We're not retreating. Yeah.
Retreat sounds like we're going to a small.
All right. We'll move on to Agenda Item 15, considering the minutes of the February 17th meeting. Any comments or changes?
What date are you on?
February 17th?
Oh.
Yeah, I think that's.
February 17th is good.
Seeing none, those are approved, in the minutes of February 19th.
Julie's got a correction on that one.
We both have it.
Yeah, well, I think, and it's the same language that, it's on the page three, the Vermont School Boards Association Legislative Update. The second sentence, if I said that, that's, it was wrong that I said that, because that's not what exactly the VSB is doing. But I don't think I said that. What I think I said is that the VSB, and I will offer this language, and I can give it to Meg as well, if you all agree, the VSB's focus, this legislative session, is to be involved in the legislature's consideration of changes to the school governance system with fewer supervisory unions and more K-12 systems. They're, they're not, they're not pushing for that necessarily. They just want to be involved in the discussion, is what the VSB. They want to be a player at the table to make sure that school boards' interests are represented. So if that's acceptable, I'll just give that language to Meg.
Give it to Meg.
Yep.
That worked.
Would that change? The minutes for February 19th are approved. And we have a tax anticipation note.
Yep. Is that at your place? And John's provided a overview of the, those that responded, and has his recommendation to me on the merchants. Anything you want to highlight, John?
There's two things. I've reached out to the Key Bank. I saw that they're now the depository for City of Burlington. And they may be interested in the future. They're, they're, they didn't officially bid, but their bid was closer to 2% if they had bid. And secondly, Chitt, uh, Peoples went through our audit and was asking about our nutritional service deficit and what our plans are. So it's caught the attention of the, of the banks. So just, and it wasn't a problem. I, I explained what we had funded this time and what our plan was, and how we have a new, a new system in nutritional services. So we, we handled that, but I just thought I'd bring that up.
All right. So do I have a motion to approve the tax anticipation note as recommended by administration?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments on AP Orders 31, 32, and Turning Point 78? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to announcements.
Mm-hmm. So again, you have these also at your place, but I'll just highlight them for you. Orchard School on Friday, March 28th has their fairly traditional skate night at Karnes Arena. Also, I think continuing on the neighborhood learning communities that you heard Jason Kushner talk about, along with Patrick, at our previous board meeting, those are ongoing. And I think important for folks just to understand kind of the, where those are happening and how folks could be involved. And so we will post these, this information up. There's a lot of it, a lot of different times available for folks to participate. Chamberlain School Music Concert is on April 1st at 6:30, again, for grades K through two, and then on April 2nd at 6:30 for, for the third through fifth grade. And then also, it's hard to believe, we're, it's upon us again, but kindergarten screening is around the corner. And again, the elementary school principals, along with Stuart, have organized and communicated with consistency around our, our screening dates. And so those are currently in play. And those dates are for Chamberlain, the 7th and 8th, Rick Marcock, the 9th and 10th, and Orchard, April 9th. And so those are the dates that we currently have, so. And many other things going on. I think our, our students, you know, are all back, trying to get back on schedule. And those of you who know, when you get off schedule, sometimes it's hard to get back on schedule. But we're back. So thanks.
Any other announcements? All right. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we are adjourned.